Order. Welcome to the regular council meeting, City of Bossier City. It is 3:02. And we'll start with the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Chris.
Let us pray. Holy Father, we thank you for this time that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for all your goodness, your kindness. We thank you for this season of receiving Christ as saving Lord of the whole world. We thank you, Lord God, for your perfect gift to us. Lord, we lift up today Mr. Jacobs. We ask you, Lord, to touch his body. Bless the medication that he may be taking. Lord calls him to recover day by day. We pray for others who may be sick among us. We ask you to bless them. Thank you for those who serve others. We pray for direction in this meeting today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as a reminder, please silence your cellphones. And if you need to take a call, please go out to the lobby and do so. Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cellphones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the President pro tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, council, before I get started on ceremonial matters, I want to recognize the Bossier youth leadership in our audience today. If you don't mind standing and giving your name and where you're from.
I'm Molly Shaw from Maryland. I'm from Old Jones. My name is Mina Lucky. I go to the earthquake.
My name is Kate Price.
Thank you for visiting today. All right, ceremonial matters. Ms. Pope with Bossier Arts Council, East Bank District, update.
It's good afternoon, everyone. Per the agreement that we all entered back in the month of March, one of the elements was for an annual report to be presented to the city council during the month of December. I will give you a heads up that this is a incomplete report because we are still actively, still programming. We're in our fourth quarter. But we wanted to take this time to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to be able to program the plaza as well as the management of it for the public that comes into the East Bank District. Over the course of 2023, we did have, and I will say this, our visual is not working for whatever reason because technology does that. But in 2023, we saw approximately 4,300 visitors. We had a goal of 5,000 that would just enter the plaza. That does not count our building across the street, or it doesn't count with any of the annex programming either there at the Arts Council. This is strictly those individuals who came down to the East Bank District specifically to visit the plaza. That looked like a programming that varied from markets to music opportunities to some arts education opportunities that were folded into that programming. We did submit quarterly programming, excuse me, quarterly reports to Ms. Amanda Nottingham, the current C A O, as well as Ms. Phyllis McGraw per the agreement as well. With the remaining programming that is set for the remainder of year, we will surpass our goal. Per the existing agreement between B A C and the Arts Council, we were asked to present a total of seven programs. We are at six programs with two more coming down the pipeline to end the year. So we have surpassed that. It continues to be a space that's operable and available to the public for their Bossier Bike Nights, for example. The Dement Brothers, they have used it as a meetup space post the horrible storms that happened back in June. You had many recreational spaces that were ruined, or they did not have meeting spaces. And so they decided to make the plaza a meeting space. And we were happy to support them in that endeavor. It also looked like economic impact. Those 4,300-plus people didn't just come to the plaza and leave. They spent their money in the East Bank businesses. Our visitors weren't just simply Bossier residents. We've had individuals from as far as Germany, the U K, the Netherlands, who came to this area for various reasons, but they decided to come down and make the East Bank a primary space for their visitation as they ate and enjoyed what was available to them. Programming again started back in February with the first quarter with our Mardi Gras Markets. It went into the Cakes and Corks event that takes place in the spring as well as our Easter Markets. The summertime, unfortunately, we did struggle with programming because triple-digit heat indexes were a hard sell to be able to get artists to come out to fill those spaces, to be able to get vendors to come out to fill those spaces. We were able to have a concert, an outdoor concert in September, but most other programming, we had to reroute to indoors during the summer months. During the fall, we had a substantial amount of visitors for our October annual event of the Zombie Walk, which saw approximately 1,000 visitors. It's kind of hard to track because, of course, the plaza is not a closed-in space. We count to the best of our ability, but we don't meet everyone there that's walking to the grounds. Again, that equates to individuals coming down to not only just take advantage of the free music or what the activities are for their families, for their children, but they go and they eat at the restaurants. They go and they shop at the spaces they're allowed to shop at. As far as the bookings, we were scheduled to, of course, host Keep Bossier Beautiful for their annual fundraiser, but due to inclement weather, it just, we could not make it happen. One of the drawbacks there of the space is there is not a backup plan. If you plan an outdoor event, unless they have an existing relationship with a nearby venue, there is no space that they can go. So we did run into that issue when trying to get various spaces to actually confirm their bookings with us. Again, we want to say thank you all for the opportunity. I apologize because the visual is not working for you all to be able to see it. We would like to take time to thank you all, the councilmembers. We want to thank Mayor Chandler and his staff, as well as the Bossier Police Department who worked with us and the other East Bank businesses as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we have a... Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Counsel, we have one add-on request. It's from the administration. It's a resolution to change the name of Diamond Jack's Boulevard to Live Casino Boulevard. It'll be first and final reading, and it's being requested due to time constraints, and it would be new business item number eight.
Make a motion to approve, to amend the agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Smith and a second by Councilman Williams to amend the agenda and adding this on. Is there any public comment on that? Any questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Mayor, it said in there, time constraints. What are we? Amanda, who?
The groundbreaking ceremony next week that we're from the Cordish Companies. And so we wanted to get this in place prior to that. So this was just one we didn't get in time. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Nottingham, what about all the signage on I-20?
That will have to go through D O T D and will be the responsibility of Cordish Companies. The local signs would be on the city. It's minimal cost. And then, but the businesses that are affected have all been notified.
Additional questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Item has been added, new business number eight.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience on amended agenda? All right, cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2023 regular council meeting and disperse for the reading.
Move.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Hammond. Questions from the audience? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for P-23-18 Bossier City Municipal Complex Security Upgrades.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. The bid today is for bid number P-23-18 Bossier City Municipal Complex Security Project. On your item fact sheet in front of you, I did put the engineer's project estimate under the explanation of proposal. The one online only has that number in there. It doesn't say explanation of proposal, so that is what that number represents. There were three addenda on this project, and as it shows, the engineer's estimate is $547,000. The first bid is from E L A Group. They did acknowledge all three addenda. They have their bid bond. Their base bid is for $960,000. Alternate number one is $351,000. Alternate number two is $46,300. And alternate number three is $12,000. Okay, our next bid is from Integrity Incorporated. They did acknowledge all three addenda, and their bid bond is included. Their base bid is for $969,000. Alternate number one is $224,000. Alternate number two is for $35,800. And alternate number three is for $15,700. The last bid for the project is from Precision Builders Incorporated. They have acknowledged all three addenda, and their bid bond is included. The base bid is $818,000. Alternate number one is $220,000. Alternate number two is $5,250. Alternate number three is $7,420. I ask that you take these bids under advisement.
So move. Second. I guess we'll get back together after you meet with a contractor. Or how, I'm just saying it, that it's double the price.
It is, right. And I know they had to add the builder's risk policy, which might have added some, but...
It didn't.
Even with that.
It didn't anywhere near that.
Right. So we'll get back, I'm sure, with the engineers as well after I go through and make sure their numbers all...
Why is, why is...
Go ahead.
What is the builder's risk? How did that...
Because it's attached to the building, and it's in our standard terms and agreements because it's part of, it's for this out here. They're going to take down part of that brick entrance.
Yeah, I get that, but why is the builder's risk coming up now? Because normally the contractor, that's in their cost as well as the performance and payment bond. It's all a factor. Why is that being separated?
I don't know that it's being separated. It was just one of the questions that was covered, and I don't know that they had thought about that. I don't know.
Ben's coming up. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, that's unusual.
I don't know that I'll be able to...
This is much better.
...resolve all of that. So Kevin Bryant's here. He's the architect on the project, and we'll be getting together to go over...
That's fine.
...what the cost was, what the difference there with precision. Regarding builder's risk, we had to work with the city's insurance agent to tell the contractors exactly how much risk insurance they needed to procure for this project. So we had an addendum we put out that put some hard edges on what that risk policy needed to look like, is all.
All right, I'm not going to take up time, but I'd like to learn more about that, please.
Sure. Thank you all.
All right, comments from the public? Any additional questions from the council? First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Hammond. Cast your vote. We're taking these under advisement.
Motion carries.
Finished business?
Adopt an ordinance to transfer $1,900,000 from the general fund to the liability insurance fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to establish a Citizens Charter Review Commission for the purpose of revising Bossier City's Home Rule Charter. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. And my prayers are out for Mr. Jacobs, too. I just wanted to mention that. There are two things I want to read that I think that if the people in the council have not gone and done the research themselves, you need to read this. But there are two issues. Article six of the Louisiana Constitution, section five, at the very end, if you read through it and understand it enough, I think you see that the intent is that at least one member of the commission who does a charter review should be elected and appointed from each affected local government subdivision. I'm not going to read it all because it'll take me too much time. If you haven't gone and read that, each councilman, you shouldn't be voting to continue. You should continue this to another meeting if you haven't done that research yourself. And then if you look at revised statutes, 4261, I mentioned dual office holding at the last meeting, but I want to read this for the public to understand. It's essential that for the maintenance of a democratic society, the public officials and employees perform public business in a manner which serves, promotes, and maintains the confidence in the general citizenry of a high level and trust in public officials, public employees, and government decisions. The attainment to this end is impaired when public officials and employee holds two or more public offices, whether you consider this as an office is subject to your interpretation. But it says are public jobs, which by their particular nature, conflict with the duties and interests of each other. And if you're, and that's the whole intent of dual office holding, is not to be in two positions. The attainment of a high level of confidence and trust by the general citizenry in public officials, employees, and government decisions is further impaired by the excessive accumulation of government power, which may result from a public official, from public officials or employees holding two or more public offices or public jobs. That's subject to your interpretation, whether you can appoint somebody to multiple positions. But having somebody in an elected position also serving on a city commission doesn't seem to make too much sense to me. So those are two issues that are some of the reasons that I think that the city ought to consider tabling this issue. Clearly, there, we're concentrating the power in the few, which goes against this. Now, the comment that was made in the last meeting, Mr. President, was that two of the councilmen could not find people from their districts to serve. Just talking to people today that I didn't ask to come, there are two people from the two districts that are not representative that would be willing to serve on this commission throughout the whole process, very dedicated people who come to these meetings. So there are two districts that are totally unrepresented. I think that we could solve the two issues that I'm talking about right now if you consider those, but there are two people that you could probably catch from both of those two districts. I wish you'd consider it. Thank you.
Additional comments from the public? Any questions from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the 2023 water fund budget. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to establish a minimum reserve balance for the health insurance fund. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Angela, I was just, what did that number work out to be initially?
For the reserve?
Yeah.
Well, we're doing 2.5 million. So for the year...
Yeah, I'm just saying, and maybe it's, I can get with you. Probably easier if I sat down with you and just walked through.
We can walk through how that number was arrived.
I just, I want to know where we're starting, you know, our goal, what our potential claim, you know what I...
Yeah, and I can tell you that's approximately three months' worth of claims, which was a little bit more conservative than what was recommended by the insurance company.
Okay, well, I'll sit, we can walk through that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the incurring of debt and issuance of taxable excess revenue bond, Series 2024, in the amount not to exceed $550,000 by the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Highway 71 Street Lighting Project Phase Two with an increase in project cost of $6,667.50 and adding an additional 153 days. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Montgomery and Maggio.
Ben's can have it.
Second by Councilman, got one arm wrestling? Second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Elm Grove Ditch Project with an increase in project cost of $22,279.07 and adding an additional 93 days. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair storm damage to the reservoir pump station for Bossier's water treatment facility at a cost of $12,099.71 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. First and final reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $640,000 from the disaster reserve fund to, for June and July 2023 storms. Final, first reading, sorry.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I do. Mr. President, Ms. Nottingham, are we getting any kind of reimbursement from FEMA or anybody for this?
We're eligible for up to 75% from the state, and we're working through submitting that.
We're working on that.
And then it'll all go back into the disaster reserve fund.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Additional questions? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $10,000 from the disaster reserve fund to purchase equipment for winter weather preparedness efforts. First reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Is this going to jinx us if we approved this right here?
Unclear.
We'll give out...
I guess we'll find...
We'll give out Mr. Rich's and Ms. Nottingham's phone number for that. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Rich, first, please. Any other questions? Cast your vote.
Hopefully, we won't need it.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two deputy marshals to fulfill two positions for the enhanced security measures to the municipal complex as approved in the 2024 budget. First and final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Maggio. Comment from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I mean, do we? I think we might need to continue this for a little bit, just until we sit down with the architect and, I mean, the prices that we got on, for the renovation out there, I mean, was just about double from our estimates, so before we go out and hire... Or... Do you mind if I... Yeah, go ahead. Angela, would you, so we've got four, five, six. What is the, and Mr. Whitman, I don't, what is the net effect to the general fund out of these three proposed resolutions?
It's neutral. There's no increase because the two new employees are already built into the budget, and they won't be hired until 2024.
So we're slick on the budgets, what I'm saying, right? We're not occurring additional cost over and above what was budgeted in 2024.
Correct.
Correct.
I, Albert said nothing.
And we're not going to plan on hiring them until we get close to completion date.
Okay.
You know, no sense in having them here, and there's nothing they can do, you know?
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one lieutenant to captain and one sergeant to lieutenant for the Bossier City Marshals Office, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Hammond.
Hi, Mr. Montgomery.
Montgomery? I knew that. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
And again, I just want to emphasize when I said four, five and six, that five, this is not going to be an additional money to the 2024 budget, correct?
Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of two positions due to two retirements and to backfill any positions this creates by hiring or promoting from within the Bossier City Marshals Office, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Hearing of appeal for Ricky Evans, Bossier City, Louisiana, for violation of city ordinance, Section 14, vicious and dangerous dog?
All right, we're going to open the hearing on the appeal for Ricky Evans regarding the dangerous dog designation. First, I want to call Susan Stamford, the Bossier City Animal Services, to provide a report for us.
So we're here to deem two dogs dangerous that are in our possession right now. They were brought to Bossier City Animal Control due to attacking a resident of Bossier City and her animal.
Did they, did they injure this, this person?
Yes.
So they bit her and?
Yeah, they injured her and they injured her animal.
Questions for Ms. Stanford? Uh, next on the call, Jason Nichols, attorney for the Maythers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. Jason Nichols, our resident, Jeannie Maythers, she's the bite victim, and, and she will, you know, speak about this. Ultimately, we would ask-
Sorry to interrupt you. If you could state your address, please, too, for the record.
Sure, 1030 King's Highway, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And Ms. Maythers is here today to speak about the, the incident, and ultimately, we would ask that the court, you know, uphold the designation of dangerous dog. I think pursuant to the stat, the city ordinance, dog can be declared dangerous if they either bite an animal, or if they bite or threaten to attack a human, and in this case, both of those happened. Ms. Maythers is also here with her husband, Colonel Russ Maythers.
Name and address for two, please.
Jeannie Maythers, 336 Autumn Ridge Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, on October 30th, in the evening, I was walking my dog and was attacked by Mr. Evans' dogs, at which point I was taken to the ground, and my dog escaped from me. Thankfully, she went home. The reason that the dogs stopped was another neighbor came out, heard my screams, and fired off a shot. I'm thankful for that person. After that, I went on to the ER, where I received stitches in my finger, I had bandages to my arm, I had bites to my lower left leg, my dog had bruising and bites in the back of her haunches, her right forward paw. And for record, my daughter is, my dog is canine, good citizen certified by the AKC. We are a registered therapy dog team with the Alliance of Therapy Dogs, making visits in Bossier City to the boy, Cypress, libraries, et cetera. I noted that, from letters written by the public, that these dogs have been a concern in the neighborhood previously, which I didn't realize, obviously, and have held people at bay from walking their dogs on that street. I would caution not having a dangerous dog warning with these dogs, just in the fact that I don't want this to be something that happens to somebody else. Or it could have been the next night, which was Halloween, and we had hundreds of trick or treaters in this neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Before we call the dog owners, are there any others in the audience that would like to make comments?
I just wanted to ask the lady here, she referenced that there were other complaints. Is that?
Um, there are other complaints that was, that when we did our investigation, it did come forward. The only discrepancies we have is a lot of those complaints said that they called the dogs males, which that, you know, you can be confused when you're referencing an animal, which is fine, but they sent in pictures of them to support their statements, and they actually are male dogs, gray and white pit bull, that's a male dog. The dog we have in custody, that's gray and white, she's a female. So the dog in question, the neighborhood that's out all the time, that's a male dog, that's harassing the neighborhood over in Stonebridge, isn't the dog we have. So.
Is that another dog?
Apparently, that we don't have, and it's not, is, that is not owned by Mr. Evans.
Okay.
I'm not disputing the fact that his dogs got out that night off his property and, you know, bit this lady and her dog, but the dog that's out in question through the Facebook posts, isn't the same, it's a male dog.
Another problem.
Right. So the dog that the people are sending and posting on Facebook that's out and aggressive, that people have changed their walking route for the last months and are afraid to walk by, isn't the same dog that we have in custody at Bossier City Animal Control.
I know this hearing's about this animal, but if we've got another problem, we certainly need to address that.
Right, but I'm just saying that, you know, they shouldn't, they should be deemed dangerous because they, you know, against ordinance, but it's not the only dog out that's causing this problem over there.
Well, what do we do to eliminate that problem? And again, I know that-
We can patrol the area and see who may own that dog.
Okay.
But all the fault doesn't fall on this one gray and white female pit bull, because the ones that are in photos that are sent to us is a gray and white male pit bull. So.
That's in the, in your agenda items, the pictures as such?
I'm going to ask, I mean, this, the, the dog that we have in custody, or over there, is that the actual dog that did the biting?
Apparently, yes. I mean, Animal Control wasn't out there that night.
Is it this dog that we don't know?
No, it was Mr. Evans' dogs that got out of his property that night and bit this dog and this lady. We don't, he actually owns two dogs, a gray male pit bull and a female, I mean, gray and white, brindle and white pit bull. No one could say for sure which one attacked Ms. Maythers and her dog, but his male pit bull that's in our custody hasn't shown one sign of aggression, you know, at all. The happiest animal we've seen in our shelter, so.
Well, that's not the law, though.
Oh, exactly.
I mean, let's not, that's the thing that we have to deal with, is we're bound by a law that we passed, and we heard the definition from this gentleman that both of those have been violated.
Right.
From Ms. Stanford, did you say that you could not determine if, or which dog bit the victim?
We took witness statements from, we weren't, we were not called, Animal Control was not called to the scene the night it happened. It was handled by Bossier City PD. No one for sure which dog bit in the, all the chaos that happened. I do have one witness statement that said it was the gray and white one, but it wasn't collaborated with anybody else's. No one really said, all they said was there was one pit bull, and it was gray and white. So.
How do you determine that both dogs are deemed vicious?
Not deemed vicious, deemed dangerous.
Endangered, okay.
Yeah.
How do you determine that?
We deemed dangerous because at the time, no one could decide, no one could say which one actually did the biting. They were both out there, they both approached her, they both attacked. No one could say which one actually physically bit, so we had no choice but to pick them both in and have them serve a rabies quarantine.
But they both attacked?
Yes.
So that's my point. We're, I think we need to focus in on what the law states, and Mr. Ray, if you could provide some clarification here so that we don't get off track.
Yes.
We stick to the law, and that the two animals attacked the lady?
The designation of dangerous can be that either the dogs bite a human or another animal, or attack another human or an animal, and it's my understanding of the facts that both dogs were involved in the attack. I've reviewed Ms. Mayther's statement, I've seen the statements that she gave to law enforcement that evening. She described a violent attack where both of the dogs circled her multiple times and came in attacking her and her dog, and although they may not know which one bit, it's my understanding that both were involved in the attack, and that's what the facts show, correct?
And that's the definition of the law?
And that's the definition of dangerous dog.
Yeah, dangerous dog is any animal who leaves its property with the intent to attack, yes.
Correct. It doesn't have to bite, it just has to attack.
Correct.
And both dogs were involved in the attack.
Yes.
Both dogs are in custody?
Yes.
All right, any additional questions for Ms. Stanford? All right, we're going to call Ricky Evans, the owner of the dogs, to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me. Ricky Evans, 600 Enchanted Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana. And first of all, I would just like to apologize to Ms. Maythers, because I hate that this entire situation happened, but I would like to tell y'all a little bit about me and my wife, because I think it gives context to who we are and what we stand for. We own three businesses in the Shreveport and Bossier area. One is a behavioral health agency, where we work with youth and mentor youth. One is a residential redevelopment company, where we redevelop housing for, you know, in poorer neighborhoods, and the other one is a dep, professional services, where we work with new business owners and such, and stuff of that nature. But I say that to say, and we, we also operate two nonprofits that's designed to, to, to work in mentor youth. I say that to say that we try to add value to our community. We don't try to, you know, take, I mean, we wouldn't harbor dangerous or vicious animals. If I thought those dogs were dangerous, they wouldn't be there. Those dogs, I keep those dogs in the house. I have a four-year-old grandson and a seven-year-old son who plays with those dogs all the time. Those dogs go to the, the, I have the, all of my records from the neighborhood vet, they've never had any problems with those dogs. I have a statement from the young lady who, when I take them to the salon to get groomed, and, and her statement, she said something to the effect of, what did she say? I said, I have a letter from the manager at the local grooming salon describing these dogs as happy, sweet, loving pups, sweet, loving pups who are always happy to see my staff and never attempt it to bite anyone, and she left her phone number in case someone wanted to contact her. When we go out of town on vacation, I call the people in the community to come and feed the dogs, take the dogs out for a walk, or whatever, and like I said, I'm not, even the people at the animal shelter, the very first girl I encountered at the animal shelter, she was like, that, that puppy, that seven-month-old puppy is like the sweetest dog ever. And I'm not taking away from the fact that this happened or shouldn't have happened, but I just don't feel like, and initially, when it first happened, I wasn't going to even contest it because I felt so bad for Ms. Maythers and her family, and I didn't want them to, you know, I didn't even want to bring the dogs back to, to the neighborhood because people don't like pit bulls anyway, but these dogs were not raised that way, these dogs are not, you know, dangerous or vicious. I cannot explain how or why this happened that night. I hated it, but, and I know it probably won't change nothing, but I at least wanted to come and speak up for the dogs, you know, because they can't speak for themselves. And really, it's my fault because they shouldn't have been able to get out that fence, but it was like a, one of the bars in the fence or something was messed up, so, and they, and they got out. And as far as people in the community saying that, I don't, I, one, if those dogs were vicious, dangerous, I wouldn't have them over there. Two, I, I've never had a complaint from Animal Control, from Bossier Parish, or anybody about my dogs, so, and if I felt that they were, I wouldn't have them over there.
Thank you. All right, councilors, is there a motion to overturn the Animal Control's designation of dogs as dangerous?
No, I'll make the motion. We uphold Animal Control's recommendation to deem both dogs dangerous.
A second then.
All right, the motion is made by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams, to uphold Animal Control's designation of the dogs as dangerous.
Mr. President, has Mr. Evans been explaining what that termination will be, what it would mean to the results of that?
I believe so.
Yes, I, I, they supplied me with copies of everything, and I, and I actually read over it.
Okay. Is there any questions you have about, about what you have to do?
No, they, they kind of explained it to me already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, coming in.
You made a motion in a second?
Yeah. We're not, we haven't voted yet. Ready?
The motion is to-
Uphold?
Uphold.
Animal Control's designation.
All right, comments from the audience, any additional? Any additional questions from the council on? All right, cast your vote, to uphold the designation as dangerous.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to close the hearing on the appeal of Ricky Evans regarding the dangerous dog designation.
Adopt a resolution to change the name of Diamond Jack Boulevard to Live Casino Boulevard, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, there's no reports. The mayor, any announcements?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize the employee of the month, that's Ms. Kelly Bell with the Public Utilities, and thank her for all the work that she does. She's going to be in the city newsletter with her picture and a little write-up that Louis puts out every month, and we just want to, we're going to start monthly appreciating different people from different departments, so recognize her.
Where is Ms. Kelly? She's not here today? Being with Letter Off or what?
Oh, she was working.
Come on, man.
I know she always watches the meetings, so I'm sure she appreciates that.
Kelly, we appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, does he get a stifing or something like that? Is that a part of it?
Uh, that's for both, sir. I mean-
Is that how many takes?
That's what I've been told.
Mayor takes him to lunch.
Any additional announcements from the council? All right, meeting adjourned.